Alright, is everyone ready here? Is everyone more ready?
Yeah.
I would entertain a motion to open the informational meeting for DD 10, South Maine.
So.
Roger, thanks. Is there a second? Carter.
I don't think I've got an emotion yet today.
Maybe not. Um, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, nay? Alright, we will kick off our informational meeting for DD 110, South Maine. Thank you all for coming. Does everyone have a handouts and stuff, the information? Okay, so everyone signed in? Alright. Roger, do you wanna kick off any conversation about this? This was project when it was your district, or how do you wanna handle that? Or do you want me to, or?
Doesn't really matter. We had interest that was not put in with your original closing. That got overlooked. We have some repairs that need to be spread out over the district. And between the two of them, it... Comes to a total of...
Three hundred and fifty?
Yeah. Big number.
Yep. Is there anything else you want?
I think it was, this was before you were hired, Mark.
Sorry, 2011, I believe.
Yeah.
The engineer.
Don't have a good explanation. I'll slip through the cracks on my board's engineering report.
Is there anything else you wanna say? Otherwise I'll open up for questions.
I think that's about all the explanation that we have.
Okay. Any of you landowners, members of the district have questions? That's probably as good a place to start as any.
I guess I can't even hardly hear you, my ears aren't very good.
It's difficult to hear.
Is this for past, a past bill from, from the time we worked on this ditch a long time ago, or work on the tile? Is that what it is?
It's, it's when they did the improvement.
Yeah.
The tile, tile improvement project from like, the completion hearing was held in September 22nd of 2015. So yeah, it's from almost ten years ago.
And why is it being brought up now?
The warrants are outstanding, yeah.
The what is?
Warrants.
So, there's, warrants are a standard piece of pretty much every drainage project we do now. We pay the contractor, engineer, whoever is doing the work with warrants. And that's a structure in the code of Iowa that allows us to pay bills before we actually assess and bring in dollars. But, there, there was a couple other situations in this county that we started reviewing things all deeper and found out that this was one of the districts that had a difference of what was supposed to be coming in versus what was outstanding. And that, that deficit is kinda listed on the paper here. So, there's outstanding warrants of just shy of $500,000, 493. And there's waivers for, people signed up for waivers for the original improvement project that set their payments over twenty, was it twenty years waivers? So those, those payments and what's outstanding to be collected is about 163,000. So the difference is that 329 you see on your paper. There are, also have been some repairs recently. And there's more repair requests that have been made recently as well. So, the amount we set to assess is 350,000. And a large majority of that was from the project approximately ten years ago. It would've started construction in 2014, I think we saw, and finished in 2015. So the completion hearing was at September 22nd of 2015.
Can you elaborate a little more on the, the timing discrepancy you mentioned?
As far as why it was, what's that?
The warrants?
So the, yep, so the warrants are a function in the code. It's basically a loan against the ground in the district that the, the state legislature authorized us to do. But that allows us to pay the bills as they come in. And, then, our method of collecting that money from landowners is in the form of an assessment that we do once every year. Coincides with tax time and all that.
So was, was there some irregularity?
So, the original assessment basically was short the amount of interest that had already been accrued at that point in time. Because when the original engineering and construction work was done, all of those bills started accruing interest as soon as the board approves to pay them. And, that dollar figure, it's, it's labeled stamped warrant interest through October 2016 was just shy of $300,000. And that was not included in the total that was assessed out.
Why not?
It was overlooked at the time. I, I can't answer that. I started on the board in 2019. So this was, this was assessed out in 2016.
So, so that 289,000 you're representing, or to your understanding is interest that, that is accrued between... This construction project, I think essentially occurred during 2015.
Probably, fourteen into fifteen, yeah.
Was, was bid out.
Yep.
And it was accepted under the understanding that there was progressive billing.
Yep.
So everybody should've understood, I guess, that as this project moved along in 2015, and, and ongoing accumulation of warrants would be compiled. And there was no effort made to account for that interest expense?
I, I don't know why it wasn't accounted at the time.
And, and so that, that's interest that occurred between when and when?
So that would be the start of, basically from the start of engineering, the start of the project to the end of the project, which we were looking at some of those original bills. I think engineering started in 11. And then you would have engineering and construction bills all the way into 2015, early 2016. If there was, I don't remember when the last engineering.
When were the first payments made on, on the, on the progressive billing of the district?
2014, in, at some point in time.
For construction.
For construction. The, the first payments were in 14.
What construction was started in 2014?
Engineering.
No, there was, there was payments to rightsals in 14. Yeah. I don't, I don't know what kind of work or how much work was done, but I can see that we paid bills to rightsals in 2014. Do you, what, what's the first date? August? So, late summer, early fall, they probably were starting construction, I would imagine. And they might've, they might've stored materials on the job site. I, I don't know what that exactly entails. That's, that would be in the records of what those payments were for, but... That's, that's what this, this specific report that Marge has shows the timing of all those and each payment individually. So, something would've been started construction-wise in 2014.
What, what was the interest rate on those warrants?
Six. Six, six percent.
Those were all at six? How, how do we, how do we accrue 290,000 dollars of approximate interest? At six percent?
In two years.
Well, not even two years. The, the bulk of this had been over fourteen months. There may have been some small payments in, in 2014 that... The, the bulk of this construction was done in 2015. There shouldn't have been much progressive billing until 2015. Unless I'm mistaken? Is there an accounting somewhere of how this 289,000 dollars is computed?
Do you know what report you had for that to come up with that dollar figure, Marge, by any chance?
It'd be with the treasurer's office.
Okay. So there's several that are a thousand dollars to rightsals there. Let's see. Actually, well... Give me a second to count how many are on a page here.
And, and then while you're looking at that, can you, can you tell, can you tell us what, what agency, I guess, issued these warrants? And then, answer whether they've, they've been sitting here since 2016 waiting for payment of interest that was accrued? And, and nobody's done anything about it until 2024?
Roger, do you wanna address that? Exploration date on, on that, or a date where that they are supposed to be paid or taken care of?
Yeah, we had a completion hearing in September.
Are they ten or twenty year waivers?
Twenty year. So the, the waivers would've been twenty years.
Yeah.
But the warrants.
Warrants are any initial expenses that come up.
Well, yeah, any, any.
We had, we had a closing meeting in, in, in 2015.
Yep, any, any bills the district's liable for, there is a section in the code that says they should be assessed out within two years. There is, there is some.
And so that didn't happen, or where are these expenses been?
I, I don't know. And, I, I know there are some projects that, there's some flexibility in that because by the time you start your engineering to actually completing a project, you might get over that. This project, for example, was over that timeline-wise.
Explain that.
From.
This project was right on schedule.
No, from the engineering starting in 2011 to completing in 15, that'd be four years. So, some of those earlier bills, I can understand why they weren't assessed out. But you're right, the majority of construction would've been.
They were assessed out. I mean, at, at some point in time between the initial initiation of this project and when we closed on it in September of 2015, all of those bills were assessed out. With the exception of, assumably some, some interest waiver expense that's come out of the blue sky.
Aren't these twenty year waivers, they're, they're accumulating six percent interest and being paid yearly?
Yep.
And then now you wanna call them in, or is that what I'm getting to?
No, that doesn't have to do with this.
No, so that, the people that signed up for waivers, that would be shown in that 163,000 of what's supposed to be coming in from those. That would represent whatever's left to be collected there. But it looks like there's about fifty items per page on here. And this page where we started on rightsals, warrants, starts about halfway in the page, and those are a thousand each. And then there's, those are all on eight, five of 2014. Then there are two full pages after that. Make that three full pages and a little bit onto the fourth. So there would be approximately 150,000 maybe? That was, or even more than 150,000 that was paid in that first pay estimate. Then we get into the next batch that was paid nine, two of 2014. That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven and a half pages at 50,000 a piece, so that's another.
You might be looking at something a little different than what we have.
Yeah, this.
Can somebody explain what, what this is that we're, that we've been handling out?
So that is, that's showing what's still currently outstanding. Warrants are, when the money comes in, warrants are paid by the oldest that's on record.
Okay, so then... So, so, so I'm, I'm to conclude from this that there's still 325,000 dollars of warrants outstanding? And 172,000 dollars of accrued interest outstanding? Why does this not match this?
Which lines are you coordinating?
I'm, I'm looking at the, the summary of this six-page document that indicates there's 325,000 dollars worth of, 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 of principal that was built out that has various interests that's accrued with those billings to, to a total of 498,000 dollars. What, what does this sheet represent? It, it dates from September of 15 all the way to February of 2019.
Yep.
A, after of which, the, the, the cost of all of this project was closed in September 22nd of 2015.
Roger, do you have any different way to explain that?
This page?
Yeah, that has the total.
But I don't know what the 497 column would come from. Interest line.
Or Marge, do you have anything to explain that way?
The, the columns as they are, as the money comes in, it doesn't just pay principal. It does principal and the interest. So you're not gonna have the same information. But this is just showing what's outstanding on this report.
This is the summary of all of the warrants that are outstanding that were raised in the district that they did to the one hit.
Correct.
So this doesn't count any of the warrants that... Were, were there warrants earlier than this?
Yes, and they've been paid.
Those have been paid.
So this is just the remaining balance of what is left to be paid. And so the far column, the 493, is the balance that's left.
So we don't know of this list, we don't know how many of these expenses were included in our closing meeting in, in September of 2015. Uh, uh, and, and I guess elaborate to me if the board can, Roger, please. What's the purpose of a closing meet? Is that not the time with which all expenses are in? And the project is completed, and, and it's wrapped up? And everybody's presented the, the total final results?
Yes, and usually the engineer does a hearing and brings all the total expenses to the board real quick. Can, can I ask? We, we, we received the warrants. We sold them to First Bank in Blue. So they, my name's on here, so they're obviously holding on to them, putting six percent in. Why, I thought there was like a six-year, some expiration date on warrants. So this can go on indefinitely. We could be paying this in another ten years. We could be on the same minutes.
If, if we didn't assess it out, the warrants would continue to collect interest till they're paid. It's, and that's where I tried to touch earlier. It's basically, the, the short or easy way to explain this is it's basically a loan against the district as a whole, all the land. Because if you don't pay your drainage taxes, your land could be sold on tax sale.
But, but that interest is offsetting. Whichever individuals choose to, choose, choose to elect to pay me a waiver, then that interest is offsetting.
Yep, they're paying interest for it as well. If, if they sign up for waivers, they're paying their own interest for that principal that's delayed.
So this includes all the crop damages that are owed to the people in the district too, if they're under this?
That is outstanding.
That is outstanding.
Yep, that shows outstanding stuff.
If we pay our bill, are we gonna get paid those crop damages?
Yes.
We, we have, we, we have crop loss damages outstanding in this district yet?
Yeah, so that would be your six-page report here. That's got every, I mean, you got, you can see like McClure Engineering and Rightsals on there for some, but then the rest is individuals' names. Those would be crop damage payments that would've been approved by the board at the completion hearing.
Would some of them be easements? Because they didn't run, run the tile beside the old one in certain places?
I don't know, but at the end of the day, it's, it's a dollar, it's a dollar either way. I, I'm not sure whether it'd be easement versus crop damage, but I don't, because I don't know what they did for this project. But either way, it's a, it's a, a bill that the district's liable for because it was already accepted and voted on and all that back in 15. Whenever, and whenever those bills were approved. But, but yeah, there's the individual like landowner names. That would be crop damages that still has to be paid yet.
I don't understand why we're looking at bills that haven't been paid for over five, eight years. I don't understand what kind of business this is if you haven't paid your bills. Maybe I'm looking at it differently, I don't know.
Well, we paid our bill, that's why we sold the warrants, and then paid the bill off. And now we're getting charged for the interest for those warrants that never got taken care of.
So if, if you sold, if you sold your warrants for crop damage, that's, it's kinda two separate pieces of the equation all at the same time. Because the, the warrants you got paid for crop damages and selling them to the bank, that just transitions your ownership of those crop damages to their ownership of the crop damages. And they gave you cash, I'd assume, or whatever, put it in your account. So, that's, but at the end of the day, that crop damage that boils back to a bill the district was responsible for. And what we're talking about is the bills the district is responsible for. There wasn't enough assessed out to cover all of them. Does that kinda make sense a little bit?
Yeah, I just, I just have a problem with that. I thought, I mean, this, I didn't think this went on indefinitely.
It shouldn't.
So is the same thing happening in other districts too?
Yeah, and that's, that's what kinda triggered some of this, is another district. There's two districts kinda side by side that we found out last year had a deficit. And upon digging deeper into the rest of our districts this year, this and a couple others were, found that they were not on track. So we have changed our processes and, and I've asked for more information. And we're going to do things a little bit differently moving forward.
So how long ago was theirs, from back?
Similar timeline. I wanna say fourteen, fifteen?
Sixteen, seventeen.
Sixteen.
How did you become aware of this?
Well, a landowner came in to ask about their damages. And so I had to go to the treasurer's office, because the report comes from the treasurer's office. And all those waivers had been paid. So then we found that there was outstanding interest that hadn't been collected. The, the waiver report and the interest report comes from the treasurer's office.
I mean, that, that, that's my, that's, that's my, I mean, that's the crux of my question.
Yes.
How, how did that original interest allow to be accrued without any of this going? I, I mean, again, we have a project that we accepted a bid on that everybody knew was progressive billing, and we knew we were gonna be dealing with warrants. And it, it should've been relatively close to approximate what that cost would've been. Because, again, we had an estimate of when this project was gonna be done, when the county was gonna be able to assess this out on everybody's tax rolls, and when that revenue would come back in. And yet, we're looking at 290,000 dollars of interest that was accrued. I don't understand how that can happen. And you're, and you're, you're asking us to pay for that without knowing how that bill was, was, was accrued. Where does that expense come from? Is there any, and how do you even understand if it's accurate to a reasonable degree?
There's a report from the treasurer's office. They have each and every year. That tells the interest.
So the, I guess to, to the accuracy point, this, this report that shows just shy of 500,000 dollars being due, that's, that's the most recent accurate report that would show all... It, it's the difference of what has been paid in over the years versus what is still outstanding. So that, I guess, I don't.
Okay, so... So, not, not to make this worse, but explaining to me, I guess, why we're here today? And you're requesting a 350,000 dollar assessment when the real number, I'm gonna conclude, is probably just short of 500,000?
So, that's where there's still that 163 that's waivers that were signed up, waivers.
Waivers, yeah.
Yep, so the 350 plus 163 will surpass the dollar that is outstanding.
Okay, so then we're down to the discrepancy potential between 493,000 and 498,000? Means the total on the bottom of this page is 497,991 dollars?
Oh, okay. At the top of the first page, there is 4,866 that can't pay off that first warrant. So that's a positive type of how.
Okay, so there was 4,800 dollars that wasn't dealt with at closing?
No, that's just what's in the fund.
When, when warrants are called in, they have to be able to pay all the principal and all the interest of that warrant. So, that's, it's like you got three quarters of the pie, but they don't have the full pie, so they can't send it out the door. That type of, that's, that's where the dollars are. That's why the dollars are sitting there, because there's not enough to pay that next warrant. That's why the dollars are sitting there, because there's not enough to pay that next warrant. What was that?
Why did we let it go on so long, if this was finished in?
Well, I think probably we ought to feel lucky, I guess, that we're not attempting to collect interest on top of interest that we didn't pay in twenty sixteen. I think, I, we probably ought to count our chickens in that regard, but I, I guess for me, I, I'm gonna wanna see an accounting of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Otherwise, I, I don't understand how that could've been overlooked, that's not a small item. I mean, again, a project that's bid out on progressive billing, we know there's gonna be some time delay between the payment of that contractor's progress and the collection of your tax revenue. That, that, it should've, it should've clearly been factored in in the overall cost of this project, and it most certainly should've been dealt with at closing.
I fully agree with you, um.
So do we think that that's an expense that this district should bear on its own? Because there was some type of an accounting oversight at, at the county level here?
Does this board have errors and omissions covered?
We looked into that with the other situation that was similar, that we talked about before. Um, there, so our insurance provider sent back a response, it was specific to that district, but this is a very similar situation, that there is no coverage for that under our policy. But we did try to explore that avenue.
So when the board makes a mistake, they're not liable, but the four people in the county have to pick up their mistakes?
We, we paid for our end of the project, and I thought it was all done and paid for. I was pissed.
And I guess that's kinda, that's kinda why I wanted to schedule hearings, so people had the opportunity to hear about it and be informed before your tax statement showed up in the mail, and ask questions and get answers and have that conversation earlier than normal.
I see you have fired requests for repair. Are they major projects or, or small ones, or will there be more surprises to that?
I don't know off the top of my head the extent of those, um.
Are they being held up, or they're going forward?
No, they'll, they'll need to be, they'll need to be repaired.
We have one or two of those too, and I think they were fixed this spring, or at least one of them.
Might've been.
There's no warranty type thing of that either?
Well, and I don't know if Roger can speak to this, but what I've been told is that this tile project was paralleling the old system, and the old system was kept in place. And that creates a liability down the road for the district to keep that old system in a good state of repair. And I don't, I don't really know why that was done, a lot of times when we've had people request to keep old systems in, um, during my time on the board, we, we leave the physical tile in the ground, but we abandon it, so the district is not responsible for that maintenance going forward. But if that didn't happen here, then the district's still responsible for maintenance on the old system as well as the new, so it's.
The old system doesn't parallel, they're two separate systems.
They're two separate systems?
They parallel, well. And so, like, it's, it's. Are the repairs on the north main or south main?
South main, mostly.
On the south main, so they potentially are on the old parallel system.
Yep, and, I mean, that's, I don't know, that might be something we need to address going forward. Um, but I don't know what you do or how you do anything with that. If some is parallel, some is a different place, I, it, that's a whole nother can of worms.
So as a rule, when you repair it, how long does it bill go from that point on?
Well, like, smaller repair requests, if we have, say, ten thousand dollars or a thousand dollars or whatever, that would get caught and, like, sent out at the next assessment cycle. So we set our assessments in May, and that would be for that fall's assessment, so that falls tax time. So, I mean, typically, all your normal, smaller stuff is on a yearly basis.
To, to which entity is this two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars owed?
The interest?
Yes.
So the interest is owed to whoever owns control of that warrant. So if it's a farmer that was paid crop damages, it would be that, that landowner. If it was a contractor that did the work, it'd be the contractor, if it was an engineer, it'd be the engineer. But it's all based on whoever was supposed to be paid. So it, it's as, like, you can see the list, those are the people that are supposed to be paid. There's a combination of all of those on this list, there's Reitzel's, there's, um.
Does, does that, does that track then to invoices that were submitted?
Yeah, there, there would be a paper trail for all those invoices, yeah.
I, I noticed on here, I, I, I don't remember the specific count, and I don't know the reasoning that questioned that also, but there's like twenty-three-ish five thousand dollar warrants here from Reitzel's.
Yep.
That came after September first of twenty fifteen.
After September first?
Well, I, that, that's the issue call sheet on here.
Okay, so that'd be, that'd be on September first.
Again, we, we had our closing hearing for this district on September twenty-second.
Yep.
So were these, or were these not submitted on September first?
That would've been when the board approved to pay them, is when they were issued.
Okay, and, and I mean, the follow-up question is, is why were not these invoices that were submitted included in, in our closing meeting that we had, when all of this should've been finished? Where, where does, I mean, I get, there's a number of questions with that. I mean, why the even five thousand dollar amount, what are they tied to?
The even five thousand is, that's the, that's the dollar, that's the.
That's a pound of warrant size?
Yeah, it's the size.
And then Reitzel apparently knows that, and thinks that we'll, we'll just submit a five thousand dollar bill every?
No, so like, if, if we got a payment request for thirty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars, the first thirty-five thousand would be five thousand increments, and the six, nine.
All twenty-three of these are sold that are on here dated September first, could be from one invoice.
Could be, most likely, one invoice, yep, yep, but it's paid out in separate chunks.
Okay, so again, my, my, my other question then, I guess, so answer, answer why these are not included in, in the final cost of this project? I mean, he was the contractor that you accepted the bid for, he, he clearly, there was communication there to provide feedback as to whether all of the invoices were in or not. I mean, there's just a lot of things here that just don't, don't track a, a, a professional way of handling this.
So those, especially like all the contractor bills, those should've all been included, um, I believe they were, but they get.
Well, weren't they, or weren't they cut, because we're dealing with them now, it's either one or the other.
So they should've been, but when they get, when they get paid in the order of time that they're issued, if, if something earlier, like the interest or whatever, wasn't calculated in, then it slows everything down, and you kinda have a chain reaction, that the, the earlier things in time get paid first, and if they accrue more interest.
We weren't dealing with a lot of time here, again, we started the bulk of this project in the spring of fifteen, and we had a closing meeting, all done, finished, said and completed in September.
And, and I can't speak to a lot of that time.
I mean, if Reitzel's gonna, I'd, I'd have to add these up, if Reitzel's gonna come forward and submit a whole bunch of bills after our closing meeting, I have issues with that. Did we abide by the bid that was, was led to him then, or not? I mean, we got a lot of separate issues here, we, we got, we got unaccounted-for principal items, we've got two hundred and ninety thousand dollars of accrued interest that fell out of the sky from someplace, and then you guys don't have answers today for any of it.
Well, Reitzel wouldn't have got paid until the project was complete, he wouldn't have got his ten percent, which would've amounted to two hundred and some thousand dollars. See, wouldn't have got his final.
The retainage, you're saying?
The retainage would've been two hundred and seven thousand dollars. So those would all be warrants on this page.
Yeah, but that would've been issued, and it would've been known prior to the completion.
Had it been in the closing.
So it, it, to his, to his point, it would've been something the engineer and the county and all the related parties were aware of, so.
But the date that he would've got paid would've been after the hearing.
Yeah, and so the reti, what Roger's talking about is the retainage is typically ten percent, but it's kept until thirty days after the completion hearing. That's, I think that's in the code, if it's not in the code, it's standard operation, and that's just good business practice too.
That's what you're gonna speculate is what most of these are?
That's what the warrants are, but that doesn't mean that the interest that wasn't accumulated during the project, which I don't know, Marge has got two hundred and eighty-nine thousand there, if that wasn't included in the closing, then some of those warrants were paid before, the warrants don't match up with the dates, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, and that's, and that's confusing.
Right, because those, these warrants are here in front of you, but that doesn't mean that you put those warrants in afterwards, because warrants are paid by the oldest first. So the interest that didn't get spread at the time of the closing, that interest got paid already on different warrants.
Yeah, so that's where the, the, the order on the calendar, so to speak, is what changes.
When a warrant's repaid, though, the principal and interest are paid together.
Yes, yep, so, so if the interest from the earlier, earlier warrants, if, if that interest was paid, those dollars that weren't assessed hypothetically, those dollars end up being reflected in a different, different warrant, because it, it pushes everything to the front.
Explain to me, I guess, if you can, so you're, you're, you're trying to make, make a case that, that these issue dates are not accurate?
No, they're not accurate.
No.
They're, they're likely shouldn't be, because I think that's the change.
So, so then how, how, how does a warrant that's issued on September first not get included in our closing meeting on September twenty-second?
It was.
The, okay. Then why are they still outstanding?
Because the warrant, they paid the warrants.
Why, why weren't they not, why weren't they not assessed, I guess, at, 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 at the conclusion of the, the final figure at our closing meeting for the project costs? Then why weren't they included in that, and then therefore assessed out to us immediately on, on our next tax cycle?
There was no calculation for the interest that was accumulated while the project was going. It's the only explanation that I can give you, Marge, am I wrong? Is that, I don't know how else it could've happened.
So we, so we set up a proposal for a, a contractor to have progressive billing, and, and we made no effort to account for the interest that was gonna be accrued from, from his first billing cycle until the unknown date with which he completed the project and he were able to make an assessment, there, there was no accounting for that, maybe?
There's supposed to be.
And I don't feel we're liable.
Just the idea that you even looked into your insurance and errors and omissions, tied omission to guilt. You made a mistake, and now we'll just pass it on.
Yeah, and, I mean, I'm sure none of you are enjoying the position you're in. I can't say that I'm enjoying trying to explain it either, but, um, like I said before, we are changing some things moving forward, and working to make sure that this does not happen again.
So what are you changing that's gonna be different?
So, we've, we've looked at what some other counties do for comparisons, but what I've asked for, uh, for new information that the board previously has not had, is the information and comparison between what's outstanding for the account and what we know there is for outstanding bills versus what we are supposed to bring in for waivers. So like, when, when this project or any other improvement project gets done, some people pay it right away, some people sign up for waivers. Previously, in the reports that we've gotten, when we do, when we make our decision for assessments, it, they have not shown the expected dollars coming in for waivers. So like, in this case, it's a hundred and sixty-three thousand, but if you compare four hundred and ninety-three that's outstanding to a hundred and sixty-three that's supposed to come in, we're a long ways off, and if we see that comparison, we should be able to catch any issues right away. So just kinda the, the simple comparison of dollars in and dollars out, um.
Wouldn't it be proper before this meeting that you sent us out a listing of every cost for that tile repair, when it was paid, and the total expenses at the bottom, including interest? And, and so we had an accounting of what, when it was paid and what was paid? I came here twice and paid several, gave them several checks, and, and some of the numbers, they were six-figure checks, and I was told, this is it, your tile bill is paid. Congratulations, you got a tile system that works, and now, how many years later, we come back, we get another bill for?
Well, it just, it, it doesn't add up, I mean, I, 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 I'm, I'm gonna need to see, e- even if the rest of this group is gonna be convinced to stand behind this bill, I'm gonna need to see where two hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of interest comes from. That's six percent interest for a full twenty-four months on the full total cost of this project. It just, it, there's no way that that happened, it's impossible.
Because a lot of us paid, as soon as the bill was here, we paid, borrowed it someplace else, or we had savings.
It's just not possible.
Why should we pay the six percent? It is, it shouldn't be included.
If it's six percent interest, it's just not possible.
It is. So, and that's where some of the first bills would've been from two thousand and eleven, so there would've been interest accruing on those for, in the ballpark of five years, rather than.
Again, they would've been factored in in the cost of the project that we closed on in September.
Should've been.
Why, how could they not have been?
I don't know. I don't know why they weren't.
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I'm just perplexed by, by preponderance. You're, you're asking us to pay a two hundred ninety thousand dollar interest cost and you don't have the slightest idea where it came from. It just doesn't add up. You can borrow two million dollars for a whole year for half that at six percent. And, and again, going into these projects, this, this shouldn't be the first rodeo that we've had in this state or in this county with a drainage improvement project where we can reasonably estimate the time with which the contractor's bills are gonna come due and March first, when our tax money starts to roll into the county. It, it's not that complex. And there, there's no way that I can accept that that whole system was overlooked for two years. I, I'd have to go back and look at my tax assessment rolls, but I, I mean, I'm quite certain that we were issued assessments for this in, in a reasonable timeframe. And I know full well that the amount that we signed off on when we had the meeting, I don't remember if it was in this room or the room next door in September of twenty fifteen, or I was present. We agreed to and concurred to the expenses.
And that was total.
And here, here we are, nearly nine years later, being asked to pay an expense that we have no accounting for. Here, here's a number. Not, not gonna fly. I can't run my business that way. You can't run the county that way.
Well, and, and I guess that's, like I said, that's why we wanted to have this hearing to have more information out there and if there's more specific information or reports you would like, we can get those.
Will you give us an accounting? A couple of people in this room have accounting degrees. We also have attorneys. Will you give us an, an, an accounting from when the day the project started? And, and show us where that interest came from and what you had paid and when you had to pay it?
And, and if the estimate for the project matches what's been paid.
Whatever reports we can run will get you, it's all public information. Just depends on what information you're looking for and we'll.
I just told you what I wanted. I want an accounting from day one and eleven, when we started this, to the closing date, what that included, what was paid. Because we were told in like the seventh room next door, that was total.
Is that that report or would that be something different?
It goes from two thousand eleven.
I mean, if I remember that.
From two thousand eleven to today?
Claire was in the room and he was asked if everything was gone. He had, he had like, if I remember right, from nine years ago, he had like a couple of small things. Maybe it was all that he had outstanding. It was relatively insignificant.
His, his report.
And they were, and they were probably dealt with through, you know, previous assessments that we've had. And, and I think that's the other thing that we're gonna need to have in the review of this process is an understanding of what's been assessed and, and what hasn't in correlation to what the total bills for this were. Because some of this is either gotta be overlapping or, or there's, there's no sensible, sensible matter here.
I mean, I can print this out myself, make this, that'd be half an hour job. I want the invoices.
So the actual invoices for engineering and pay apps and all that for that whole time period?
I'd also like a recording, since we have this on here, I'd like to have a recording of the closing meeting.
We did, those weren't recorded.
Or where we recorded them?
Those weren't recorded back then.
Those, would have they've had just an audio recording?
I, I don't, I don't think so, but I could share.
They, they, they may, they may have had.
The minutes.
The, the minutes, yes.
There, there would be minutes, they may have had an audio recording, but the owls and all that stuff is newer technology. It wouldn't have been in place at that point in time. Okay. So it might just be the minutes. And like the engineer's completion report and all that stuff would have been documents you guys would have had at the time. We can get new copies of that. Whatever, whatever specific information you'd like coordinate with Tammy and Marge and, and they can get you all that documentation. But yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not holding any records or anything like that from you guys. It's, it's all, it's all right there, but whatever you guys would like, we can coordinate to get those requests fulfilled.
I don't think we're, should be responsible for anything that is when, why and why not? I mean, can you explain that?
I don't expect, I don't expect to pay anything until I get more answers.
I don't wanna be billed for tax, or for interests that we never were responsible for in the first place.
So one of the two districts that we were talking about last year, we did basically cancel or postpone that assessment for another year. So people could get more information and stuff, but all that does is add another six percent interest to the bill that's outstanding right now. So, um, that is a possibility, we could scratch it, um, for this year, but there's pros and cons both directions.
You better get busy right away then.
Oh, whatever information you would like, please coordinate with Tammy and Marge to get that stuff.
And I guess at the end of the day, if the information that we're provided is completely unaccounted for and we can make sense of our two hundred ninety thousand dollars worth of interest comes from. At the end of the day, I mean, I think the question still comes down to, we, we, we can maybe at that point understand or, or receive an argument that those expenses were related to this drainage one-ten repair project. And that's where it originated from. But it wasn't through the fault of anybody that's sitting in these chairs today that, 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 that penalty exists. That's on you guys. That, that's the whole point of having a closing meeting. What are the expenses? And, and, and be it, be it Raisel's, be it any other contractor, the engineers that were involved with this. If they didn't come forward, add some to closing and, and raise some issues with unpaid balances, then that's on them. It's not on us. That, that's the point of a closing meeting. I, I, I don't know that it's legitimate to pass the entirety of these expenses onto the people in this district for something that got overlooked, even though it originated for a project that was in one-ten. I, I mean, I think it's, it's something that probably you guys should look at from a bigger context of where you're gonna generate that revenue from. Because it's no fault of ours that it happened. You're asking us to pay a penalty for an accounting mistake that was made pertaining to this project that we had no knowledge or evidence of and had no ability to help you correct for nine years. And then your, your, your insurance representative can tell you that they don't wanna pay it. If I was your insurance representative, I'd probably told you that too. That don't mean they ain't gonna pay it. That's what it's for. And you guys are gonna, you know, expect us to be held accountable for this. But I think potentially maybe you ought to hold your insurance guy to be accountable for it. That's why you pay the premiums. Mistakes happen to all of us. It's how you handle it that determines, I guess, the the way that you walk down the street at the end of the day. I mean, I, I'll self-admit, I was a big proponent of this project when it was initiated. And I tried to be pretty diligent to make sure that we came in according to the relative costs that we were all told. To me, this is extremely troubling that I've got a lot of my neighbors in this room now that are getting a bill that none of us should have. I, I, it, it, it's just perplexing how something like this can happen and be overlooked. And then not dealt with for so long. And then not give us a clear account of exactly how this, this even was compounded. It might be completely accurate and legitimate. I, I, I can't make sense of it. Again, two hundred ninety thousand dollars of interest at six percent would have paid the whole water for this thing for two years. And I know that didn't happen. And that would be the equivalent of, of this project being completed and wrapped up in September twenty-second of twenty fifteen and nobody getting assessed anything until twenty seventeen. We know that didn't happen. Yeah, I mean, it, on, once we see it, it, it may, it may make sense, it might be legitimate, but to, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't pass the early step test. Two hundred ninety thousand dollars, a lot of interest at six percent. This was a two-point-one million dollar project.
And we didn't collect any money until two thousand sixteen, right? So there would have been interest on the complete project from the closing date till two thousand sixteen that didn't get spread. That would have been on the total of the dollar. Plus the accumulated interest that happened from day one with the engineering report until two thousand sixteen, so you could have two years' interest on portions of that dollar.
You have five years' interest on some of them.
Yeah, but those are relatively small, one hundred eighty-nine, in the grand scheme of things.
Relatively, yes.
I mean, the, 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 the main expenses for this project, I mean, there, there maybe had, would have been some early ordered materials that maybe would have came in maybe would have came in at the end of fourteen, that's, that's entirely possible.
And that, that report I gave her back there, that, that does show those bills in fourteen that I was talking about. Um, that's what I was reading it from, so um, there's, I don't know, twenty pages or whatever is back there in that report. Um, so that does show those payments that were made in fourteen. And everything from eleven through, through now.
Can repay our assessed bill with the warranty that are owed us? And like in my case, it's, it's about a wash. They owe me about as many crop damages as that I owe.
Well, that, that's my, that's my other original point, Dan, I guess. Everybody's name who's on that list, in my opinion, is entitled to nine years' of interest.
Well, it is.
They are, they are.
So they are, they are getting interest.
Oh, it's, you know, still, yeah, pay my Joe Allen, Wayne, who knows how many years.
Functionally, functionally.
But that's, that's not included in this two hundred eighty-nine thousand dollar figure, right? I mean, this, 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 this says stamped warrant interest through October of twenty sixteen. So in, in, in the, in the interest that would have accrued from sixteen on is not included in this figure and I don't think it's on this sheet either.
So. So functionally, no, you can't turn in your, your warrants to pay the assessment that would come in. But when the dollars come in from the assessment, the treasurer's office would see them in the account and then they would start calling warrants in. So if everything, if the entire balance of the drain was paid this fall, then the treasurer's office would start calling in all those warrants after that.
What order do they call them in?
First in, first in time, so the oldest would be paid first. So.
If you were to collect this money, does that go to the treasurer to pay, to call in warrants?
Yep, so then, then when, when the assessments would be paid with taxes this fall, they would get it, put it in the account and then they would call in those warrants and, and pay the cash out at that point. So.
And if people took out the waivers, then that would delay that.
Yes, it would.
So, so under what authority then, I guess, were, were these warrants issued a-After twenty fifteen? For a project that was already closed?
You're talking the one to McClure or to Raisel?
I'm talking to everybody that's on this six-page list. I mean, who, who, whose, whose authority are, are you relying on to issue a warrant for a closed project?
It's a reclassification after.
There are.
I mean, you guys are supervisors, you're, you're required or, or expected to re, review repair requests, allow them to proceed, take those invoices, allocate them or assess them to the appropriate district. Somebody must have went through that same process with, with, with this warranting process.
Are you, are you talking page three, like middle of page where it starts at two-two twenty sixteen for issue date all the way down? Those, that's what you're talking about?
That and the ones ahead of it. Yeah, I, I've, I've got warrants that were issued here.
Oh, yeah, there's.
I mean, this guy's earliest September first, twenty fifteen.
In December.
Which again, to the conversation I had with Roger. I mean, how, how do we know that, that these warrants or those invoices that were supposed to be tied to these warrants were not included in our closing assessment? Where's the tracking for that?
Your crop damage would not be included in the date of your closing because they are issued after the closing.
It was a reclassification after, so we had to wait for the results.
Okay, but, but are you necessarily saying, Roger, that they weren't known and included in the closing?
They should have been included in the closing.
Then why do we have them duplicated?
If they were included, why are we having them there?
The, the warrants that are standing in front of you don't mean that they happened after the closing. They means that previous warrants were paid.
Well, that, that's my original question then. Who authorized the new warrants, I guess, as the old ones got paid? I mean, either this printout isn't accurate, I'm gonna assume that it is. I mean, I've got, I've got a six-page printout here that I think you handed out to everybody before the meeting that, that's got three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars worth of warrants on it that were all issued after September first of twenty fifteen. Who authorized that?
You did it, you had a meeting when you paid it.
No.
No, what, what we authorized was the closing statement on September fifteenth that we thought all of these expenses should have been included in.
All, all payments for drainage bills, whether it's to a contractor, engineer, attorney, landowner for crop damages, all of those bills are approved by the board supervisors. Uh, that is standard process, board supervisors acting as trustees has the authority to issue those payments.
Okay, so, so these, so these warrants then that were issued, a-Again, going back as early as September twenty fifteen, the, the current board supervisors would have issued that, whoever was on the board in twenty fifteen.
At the time, yes.
At that point in time, they would have went to the treasurer's office and they would have been assigned to a drainage district and put on an assessment.
So the assessment is a separate process from issuing the warrants. The warrants are directly tied to an invoice from a contractor or whoever or the, the warrants are tied to a bill the district owes. The assessment is the county's function of collecting that dollar from landowners. So they tie together, but they're separate process.
So, so if these warrants were not, I mean, that, that's, that, that's the confusing nature of this, I mean, one of the aspects of the confusing nature is this. I'm trying to understand how these warrants got issued, but they sat somewhere for nine years and didn't get assessed on to anybody's drainage district to be allocated across. Where, where were they? Whose job is it to review, re- review those buildings and those drainage districts? Am I wrong, or are the districts not by state statute required to have a, a, a two-year, no, no longer than a two-year, uh, uh, fund balance in there?
Hmm, I don't believe they're required to have a fund balance, but.
I didn't say that quite right, but.
They're supposed to be assessed within two years.
You can accumulate expenses for up to two years before you have to assess them out, isn't that right?
They're supposed to be assessed within two years.
Then, then how did these sit there for nine years?
I, I don't know. And that.
How many, what are, what are our chances in nine years from now, if I should live that long, I get another check, another letter that says, oh gosh, we lost, we, we forgot some of these, and you owe another $50,000?
They're still outstanding.
Or they're still outstanding, or, or there's another cost that we didn't, we, we forgot about.
I, I don't know why any costs were not included at the time, but the review.
That's why I want, that's why I'd like to know it. His question is, if they, did we pay for them before and they weren't, they weren't at, at, at that time?
Yeah, that's the thing, how, how do we know whether these costs were or weren't included in our closing?
We've never been, had, shown any faith in work. And we were told that it was, that it was paid, and, and you just come with a letter and say you owe it.
It's, it's not that complicated, I, I mean, I'm, I'm sure Marge probably has all those, all those records in, in that, in the file for the district, but. So, so I guess somebody's gonna, some, somebody needs to make sure, or, or cross-reference those to, to make sure that those invoices and therefore those warrants weren't included in the original bill. Cause I, I mean, I don't wanna get paid twice for this, I don't want Raisel to get paid twice for it.
And hypothetically, if every, every bill was paid today, is there, would that be enough to wipe out? That balances out?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, I, I was present at that closing, you know, Raisel was asked if, if his invoices were in and the project was complete.
I believe that.
Yeah.
Um. If, if the assessment at the time had been higher to cover all the outstanding bills, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now.
Well, and the, and the, that, that's what's a mystery, one of the mysteries to me with this is, I guess, wha- whatever, what evidence do we have that, that that closing summary wasn't accurate? Cause as far as what my recollection was, I mean, again, Raisel was asked, everybody that was there had the opportunity to express if they had any, you know, unpaid claims, any damage concerns. Everybody was content on settling it. With the final number that was presented there that day being the amount that was gonna be assessed to us based upon the reclassification. That, that's why, it's, I mean, that's why it's really confusing for me to, nine years later, have something drudged out of the back file cabinet somewhere for warrants that date back to 2015, when, when that ship already left the harbor.
There were no warrants issued, Marge, for the $289,456 of interest. That's our, that's our problem, correct?
Yes, that's, it's abstract, it's not in a specific here.
So the interest was neglected from a period of time.
Right. And then as money comes in, it pays out, so it's, as Tyler said, moved. For your balance to be different. So the outstanding warrants that are outstanding right now are part of that.
So at.
Outstanding.
At the closing, when McClure brought the final engineering estimate, or final dollars to the board of $2,114,084, he was short $289,456 because he never included the interest accumulated while the project was going on and before the, the taxes were collected, so to speak. So we have two years' interest plus a little bit more. Is the reason for the $289,000 that we're short, correct? That's what happened.
Yeah.
And so when they paid the old warrants, they paid the interest on the old warrants that wasn't ever accumulated or put on the old warrants.
On the assessment.
Wasn't assessed for it.
Yeah.
Okay. So now when we do a drainage project, how do we assess the interest? Do we start from the beginning?
I have actually a report I can generate now where I didn't have that before. And Nick has a report that he usually runs June 30th after each year. So I don't have access to that report until, um.
Before this year, when I got a report from Nick on the warrants, it were not, nothing was correlated to drainage districts. Now it is.
Correct, yes.
Before, we never had any idea where those warrants went to. So that's where it got messed up.
Yes. And then there's also the waivers interpretation. Um, I don't know if McClure's had said that or not, but the waivers, people who would sign up for the waivers would pay the interest. And if you don't have enough people to sign up for the interest, it doesn't pay for all the interest. And that's also a misunderstanding.
So the drainage law just states that we have to collect the interest on the waivers. It never says anything on the project as it's going forward.
Right, right.
So that's a hole in the drainage project.
Misinterpretation that can be taken.
And all projects have a same engineer, all projects we've identified.
Yeah, um, what Tammy just said was all the, all the projects that we've identified that we have this similar issue, all have the same engineering firm. Um, which is not a consolation to any of you guys, but, um, they have not had any new projects in my district since I've been on the board, I.
I wonder how their insurance is.
Why don't you do like, because they quit doing drainage.
I wonder why. Sorry.
Yeah, um.
Maybe that's a good thing.
It is a good thing, they quit doing drainage because they have to be doing it right.
Yeah, I guess, and that's our board decision on who we hire too. So going forward, that has also been changed, but that's a more informal change.
So approximately what month, I guess, did, did, did you guys, Marge, where it was to discover this project?
So, when we, yeah, when we had these situations coming up last year, we knew for the next assessment year, so this year for assessments, we needed to go through things more in-depth and check everything. So this year's assessment process, when we went through that, that's when this one was identified. And then, so that would have been.
Couple months ago.
May-ish, and that's when we scheduled public hearings because wanted to be able to give you guys the opportunity to know about this earlier than just getting a tax statement in the mail.
Well, essentially, that's what, so, so you guys scheduled this meeting in May?
Yeah, May or June.
It has to be published for quite a while before we can hold a hearing.
It really didn't come to my light until Marge brought the assessment schedule for next year, and these were on it. And that would have been in June?
May.
May, yeah.
End of May.
End of May.
Our statement was stamped July 11th, close March, July 11th. That we received a letter.
Right.
And I think the letter stated that July 1st. Yep.
That really contained no information. Just a bill.
Oh, the only information today was you owe this money and, and.
And the notice.
Just pay it, I mean, don't ask any questions.
Well, that's, that's the purpose of having the hearings, is to allow the conversation, so.
If you, if you'd have included some more information in there, we maybe could have had a little more of an idea of what was going on and checked a few more records to find out when some of these bills were paid and how much each of us paid back then and looked up.
The, the point is, we're, I mean, we're at a little bit of a disadvantage because we, we had no ability to prepare for any of this with background information. You guys have been sitting here pondering over this and how to handle it, how to manage it s- since early spring or before, because this was found in other districts last year. And, and.
It should never have.
I, I didn't, I mean, I, I mean, I, I requested this information last week when I was here, and I, I, I mean, I just got it today, literally about two hours before the meeting. Ju- just as a, you know, just as a feedback comment. I mean, this, this process could potentially go a little bit smoother if, i- if there's a little more transparency with, with what's going on.
Well, and, and this isn't.
It doesn't make the bumps any smaller, probably, but.
And this, this isn't a formal hearing, we're not deciding whether we do a project or not do a project. So it's, it's really truly information-centered, so, and, and conversation-centered. So the conversation doesn't have to stop today. This is the formal piece of it, so to speak.
The first time I seen it was last night. Yes.
I don't know when Marge got it all compiled, but.
Well, that, that, I mean, that's probably fair, Roger, but you, you guys have had a comprehensive understanding of this problem for what's on top. We haven't even, we haven't even had the opportunity to go back and review our tax statements from nine years ago. Quite, we didn't even find them to try to determine what our previous assessments were. I mean, that, that's the difficulty with this, I mean, there, there's so much time that's lapsed that, I mean, there, it, it's hard to have much credibility, i- i- it's hard to come up with accuracy to justify really any of this.
And, I mean, and it's, it's difficult for me to explain something that was, I mean, I've been on the board five and a half years here, and this was completed three-plus years before I started. So, I mean, there's, there's a context there and explaining that's also difficult here.
Yeah.
Um, and, and actually, this area of the county just became my district within the last two years. So, I mean, it wasn't even part of my district until very recently. Um, but I still, I mean, I can explain the mechanics of how warrants work and all that. It's just, I can't tell you what happened in 2015 because I have no idea. Um, the, the records are the only thing that I can go off of, and you guys probably have more intimate knowledge of the project than I do for that reason, because you guys were part of it, you watched it be built, you attended the public hearings, all the above. Um, but, like I said, the conversation doesn't have to stop now. If you want certain information or certain reports, we will do all we can to get you those pieces of information.
I gotta give you nice to check your insurance again.
I don't know what avenue we would need to go down to do that. I mean, we, we opened up a claim the last time, we gave them all the information we had. They asked for more information multiple times, um. And, and they said it's not included in the coverage. I, I don't know what it was, what's that?
How, how do you guys feel as supervisors about this, I mean, if I can ask, I mean, what?
I feel rotten, to be honest, because it's, we knew nothing about the $289,456 ever. Nobody's ever conveyed, conveyed to the board that those dollars existed or didn't exist.
It's not fair to you either.
No, we, we knew nothing about it. And I'm gonna say, the board can only deal with the numbers they're given. If we get the wrong numbers, we make the wrong decision, I don't know how else, 620. It should have been brought up at the closing.
Yep, and, and I fully agree with you guys. All the, all the project costs should have been known at that point in time. Everybody knew that there's progress payments, I mean, there's relatively simple math associated with that. Um, I, I, I don't know. Um, and it's, it's difficult to sit here and try to explain something that I don't have answers for. Uh, but that's why we're trying to change some things going forward.
When my dad died, we had a lawyer in town do the will and all the whatever's involved. They made a mistake on some of the land filing. We went, my brother was trustee, he went back to the lawyer. The lawyer said, well, we're only, we're gonna do this, it only cost you a little bit. My brother said, we're not gonna charge us any of that. And they didn't, because they had insurance and covered it.
Do you think you can get some answers from the engineering company that entirely isn't in business anymore or whatever?
They're, they're still in business, um.
Maybe they can bring the lawyer up a little bit.
I believe they still do drainage, they're just not doing drainage here, um, because we have not.
Some answers.
They had, Paul Garler, IDDA, they said they were gonna quit doing drainage.
Okay, well, that.
Aggrainance, they're gonna do just cities and municipal work.
We, we could pretend.
Help to them with the last project.
Yeah, we did, we did get information from them on the last one. And the other ones, they provided a Excel document that had everything laid out that they had in the completion report. It had the construction costs, it had publication costs, it had crop damages, it had all the expenses, but interest was not figured in. And they say they don't do those calculations. Um. I don't, I don't know if there's a requirement in the code for them to do it or not, but probably not. Um.
Yeah, I.
And I mean, we could, we could hire an attorney tomorrow to dig into all this stuff, but, and you're spending more money on top of that because, I don't know. And I guess if, if that is the desire of the district, we could look at going down some of those other avenues as a district, um, whether it be engaging an attorney or something else, but.
Attorneys don't work for free.
No, they don't, but.
I think if anybody needs an attorney, it's these people on this side of the bench and over there.
Who needs an attorney?
She said they do versus us.
Oh.
I mean, and that's well within your.
You guys are, you guys are asking us to, to pay for an expense that we didn't originate.
Who was responsible for giving, giving this board of supervisors the numbers? Whose office was responsible for, who provided you with all the numbers?
So it wasn't just the engineering outfit that gave you full report minus interest? Somebody should be responsible for figuring out interest in. Somebody should be responsible for figuring out interest in the span of two years or whatever it was? I mean, that's just a no-brainer.
Yeah, it's, the county board is responsible to make sure their numbers are accurate.
Days of interest-free development, so.
Oh, excuse me. Is this, is this a complete risk with all the people that owe what you think money? Cause my name's not on the grant thing.
Are you talking about the six pages?
Yeah, I don't think so, yeah.
Yeah, so that would be what we have for outstanding warrants yet. So when money comes in, those are the people that would be paid cash.
Well, I see. I go, years ago, I tried to go and send it. Yeah, almost four thousand dollars and I'm not even on this.
Yeah, so the people that are on there are, I mean, there's, there's bills to the contractor, to Reitzel, there's McClure, there's some landowners for crop damages, but whoever's on the list would be who would get paid after the money is received to the county after assessments are paid.
The way they're listed here, is this the way they'll be paid out?
In the order of time, yes.
Okay, so the, the first one is gonna be the.
The oldest, the oldest one would be paid first, so the ones to Reitzel.
Reitzel take any cash for this project here? They were paid with warrants, the whole project.
They're always paid with warrants upfront, yeah. But then.
Is there a certain amount they got, time they've gotta hold in?
Until we call them.
Until the cash is here to call them in.
Reitzel does what everybody sells them.
Or sells them.
Yeah, he sells them.
Well, like these, the ones on here, it says they were purchased by Dell or Kim Reitzel, so they're.
Bought them from Reitzel.
They, they personally bought them from their company, yeah. Um, but is there something with security? Yeah, so like, there's, there's two in there that they evidently sold to Security State Bank. Um, so it depends. They, they hold them until they're called in or can hold them until they're called in.
So was some of the landowners paid crop damage right away and then some weren't?
Depending on the order of time, I don't know.
I don't know of any that were paid crop damage right away.
Yeah, you're gonna have to check.
The, the full detailed list I handed out in the back of the room. That would have everything that was paid from two thousand eleven to now. Um, the other six pages is just what's currently still outstanding.
All of those that say purchased by, how come on ours they're not purchased by the bank?
Just our name on there. I wonder if that's something they.
The bank, I'm not sure if the, the bank might have not notified them, notified the treasurer's office that they bought them. I'm not sure. And, and if that's the case, that's something they probably would want to do, because otherwise you'll get notified that they're due or that they're called in instead of them potentially, but.
Well, I'll check though.
Yeah.
It's up to the person who lies the warrant to make sure that they change the name on the, at the treasurer's office.
At treasurer's office, yeah. Are there any other final questions here? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the informational meeting for G D one-ten South Main. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion or final questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Motion carried unanimous. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming, and like I said, if you have any other questions or documentation you'd want, please communicate with the auditor's office and we will get that.